Okay, I'll call the order, the committee of the whole meeting of the Board of Education, October 2nd, 2019. Mrs. Hutchinson, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Booton?
Here.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Here.
Mrs. Erickson?
Here.
Mr. Long?
Here.
Mr. Hamlin is absent. Mr. Matheson is absent. Mr. Paulson?
Here.
Uh, Mrs. Erickson, would you please leave us in question?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can I have a motion, a second, to suspend the rules and adjourn to a workshop setting?
So.
By Mrs. Erickson?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Booton. Uh, Mrs. Hutchinson, please call the roll.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mrs. Booton?
Yes.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes. Okay, uh, we're workshop setting, so we have two agenda items tonight. One is a update from the Education Services Department, and then we will get an update on the portion of the graduate discussion, which I think we started last meeting. Dr. Schuler?
Thank you, Mr. Paulson. And, uh, so, uh, first agenda item is the update from the Ed Services Department, which is actually several different items that are incorporated in, uh, in this update. Uh, so the, uh, the topics that, uh, we're gonna share with the board tonight and get some feedback on tonight are actually topics that, uh, we discussed with, uh, the Board's Teaching and Learning Committee, uh, I think, uh, about three weeks back, um, and the Teaching and Learning Committee is interested in, uh, bringing those pieces forward. So, uh, I'm gonna hand it over to, uh, Mrs. Murphy, our Assistant Superintendent for, uh, Educational Services, uh, who's gonna get us started. She's gonna bring to the board, uh, tonight, uh, an update on our bilingual, uh, programming with some discussion around, uh, dual language and foreign language programming. That's something that, uh, the board heard some, uh, some public comment on, uh, I think, uh, a couple meetings back. Um, and then we're also gonna give some updates tonight on, uh, our writing and message production, um, work as well as our, uh, career pathways, uh, focusing, uh, and work on those up. So, Mrs. Murphy?
Okay, good eve- good evening. Um, I have invited my instructor for most learning here tonight, Dr. Lindsay Minter. She just obtained the deck, so, um, so, as Dr. Schuler said, we have a pretty full agenda for you here. So, we are going to start with talking about our bilingual programming that we currently have, but we're also gonna be talking about dual language and foreign language. And when we're talking about this, we're gonna talk about what we currently have here in District 200, but then we're also gonna be talking about, um, some new guidance from the Illinois State Board of Education.
So we'll start by taking a look at our current District 200 EL and bilingual student population. Um, we should indicate that EL student population, um, when we talk about ELs, we mean, um, English learners and also including encompassing the bilingual learners that we have in our district. We currently have approximately six- sixty-eight native languages represented, um, across our department. Spanish is our only TVE program in District 200, meaning that Spanish is the only language in which we have twenty or more students of one language. So, some districts have more, but we're currently serving TVE only in Spanish. Approximately fifty percent of our English learners are Spanish speakers. Um, statewide, that's approximately seventy percent, give or take. We have approximately three hundred and fifty Spanish bilingual students at the elementary level, and that's actually upticked a little bit, um, between September and October. So I run those numbers monthly, and, uh, we did see a little bit of an uptick in the average to about, mm, three seventy right now. That tends to fluctuate. All students receive English learner services, including like appropriate direct instruction, scaffolds, support, and collaboration, but our bilingual learners also receive instruction in their native language. So that's kind of the big difference. As you can see this map up here, um, this is really unique, um, because you notice that the countries represented look a little bit different than you see them on the general map, and that's because that shows where our languages in the district are either, like, those groups are either larger or smaller, and where students come from. Uh, we're really lucky in District 200 that we have kids from all over the world, and that's why that map looks that way. Now, we'll kind of scale it down and say, okay, how does that look in our district? And when you think about our bilingual sites, we have five that are stable bilingual sites: Johnson, Pleasant Hill, Washington, Sandberg, and Bauer. Um, two of those buildings have ten or more Spanish bilingual students at the kindergarten and first grade level. Okay? So, looking at those, those are Johnson and Pleasant Hill. When you look at the map of our district, you'll notice that the, the black circles are different sizes, and that's just to help you understand, like, where our larger and smaller programs fall on the map. So the larger circles indicate that we have more bilingual learners, and the smaller circles indicate that we have less. We have two buildings that fluctuate, being Longfellow and Hawthorne. So it might be that on one given year they are Spanish bilingual building or a TVE building, the next year they may or may not be because it's a give or take of a couple students. When you look at the ISBE EL, EL Programming Guidance, and actually just last week, they changed that to Emergent Bilingual Program Guidance, but, so, for those of you who follow, like, the ISBE trends in language, that's what happened to that statement. They changed that, um, I guess you'd say, like, initial or acronym or name, um, because they wanted to look at asset-based lens and thinking about, um, really, work, you know, students are coming in with languages, and how do we, um, continue to look at them as learners that way? So, Transitional Bilingual Edit, um, TPI, which is Transitional Program of Instruction, that kind of lays out what do we do for our Spanish bilingual students, and what do we do for, um, everyone else in our district that's also, um, qualifying for Title III or EL services? And so we kind of talked about that already, but the one big difference is, the one requires native language instruction, and the other one does not. That's kind of the big difference. Everybody else, we still work towards a culturally proactive learning experience. We still provide all those scaffolds and supports, and, and teachers that are in a specialist position to help with that education process. Um, the one thing we need to indicate is that in all of our TVE programs right now, we are appropriately staffed as far as Spanish bilingual staffing goes. So we do have Spanish bilingual teachers in all of our Spanish bilingual buildings. So our current program of design, uh, graphically, it looks like this. So you see the big green box? That's kind of like, where do we start with English learner and bilingual services? And we look at students, and if they're in a COTAT environment, we say thirty-plus, meaning that could be thirty minutes, that could be ninety minutes, depending on this, um, student makeup in that classroom and what we have available for staffing in the COTAT environment. Pullout, we wanna start with that thirty minutes a day because we know that we wanna have students exposed to their grade level environment as much as possible, and then we'll look at student needs following that. So then you look over at the yellow box, and you'll be like, oh, okay, so then they get targeted support based on student need. Then you kind of go down, and there's a red box, and that's where, like, you might have some students that are new to the country, or students that really need additional support. So that's what that looks like. What's good to know is that in all of those boxes, there's Spanish bilingual services provided. So whether I'm in COTAT, or whether I'm in pullout, or blended classroom, which means the classroom teacher is bilingual or EL certified, I still make sure that the native language instruction happens in all of those environments. So when you think about bilingual program in middle school, high school, what happens? Uh, we do have a, um, Heritage Spanish class at Hubble and at both high schools. So, when English learners qualify for bilingual services, they also then have the option to go into that Heritage Spanish at Hubble, and, um, the reason it was only started at Hubble is that's where they had the numbers when it was developed. So just now, we're looking at, like, okay, would that fit somewhere else? But right now, it's at Hubble because that's where the numbers existed. And then at the high school, we're currently running, um, SEL Bilinguality Program. Last year, a hundred and thirty-three students, um, qualified for that, and then this year, they're expected for that to increase. Um, we also have culture and language student support groups at all of our middle schools and high schools that, um, are bilingual sites, and I actually think all of our middle schools have something now that's either around culture, like, a culture group, or a language group, or, um, something to that effect. Then the ISBE New Rules and Regulations. So we've always had a requirement, and we would want to provide bilingual services to students, um, when that makes sense and fits the programming needs. But in April 2019, we started to see some changes about the way that the state would like that to look. And, so we started with the Consolidated District Plan in April, and when we got that plan, they specifically asked, how are we gonna be addressing the needs of your Spanish bilingual learners, along with the rest of your English learners? What's that gonna look like? Before, it kind of been like, together, how are you going to address that? Now it was separated out a little bit, like, what does that plan look like more in depth? June of 2019, we got, um, notification that of an ISBE Bilingual Service Plan. That's a new addition to what we'd been asked to do before, and that bilingual service plan asked us to say, how are we going to address the Spanish language arts standards, and how are we going to assess students in Spanish language proficiency if they qualify for TVE program? So, we submitted our plan, it was approved, so which meaning we can move forward with bilingual programming in the district, and, and they felt that our assessment plan was a good place to start for that. Now, as we're looking into the future, we know that the state's going to be looking at their Spanish language arts standards. Currently, what they're using is pretty outdated. We're, um, the state's been using, like, between 2012, 2015 standards based through WIDA, and then what they're looking to do is use the Common Core Espanol. So, they're looking to make that move. We were thinking they might actually make it before the school year started so we could start to unpack, but they didn't, and so now we're just kind of making sure that, are we going to be using those Common Core Espanol, and if so, then let's unpack those and move that direction. And then, just letting us know that they're looking at a state Spanish language arts assessment. So right now, we need to assess our native speakers, but we, as a district, choose what that assessment practice looks like, and then the state either approves it or doesn't approve it, and ours was approved. Moving forward, they have a committee to develop something much like the ELA version of IAR, but in Spanish. So that's not been approved yet or developed, but they're in working stages, under the process. So then, um, actually, I think it was Melissa Murphy's maybe, like, first day that I met her, I said, so we need to do some things with bilingual programming, and because we do, we want to do what's best for our learners, and also meet the new regulations of ISBE, right? So, when we look at this, we went into our Consolidated District Plan, we looked at that needs assessment, and we said, what do we really need to do? We're probably going to need to be enhancing how we provide bilingual services. So then we got together, and we thought, okay, well, what can we do to supplement what we already do, and also get a really good baseline data of, like, where are our Spanish speakers at, and what do we do that best fits our students and our TVE programs? So this year, we're gonna be using Imaginary En Estadio as a formative assessment option, as well as, like, a supplemental SLA instruction piece. So that's a computer program that, um, much like Dreambox in the math world, kind of like, assesses students where their language is, meets them there, and then helps them grow within that native language arena. We also have one for our English learners that meets them where they are in English and helps them develop. Um, in addition to that, we all have all, our Spanish bilingual certified teachers in every building will be working to then unpack those newly adopted standards in the spring, when we know exactly what the state's going to be asking us to do, so we don't do the work twice. We are also looking at, um, some of you may or may not know, that, um, Dr. Sluggie did a nice job of getting SEL, like, his, his, um, SEL committee worked on having texts in schools that support the social emotional learning standards, and my bilingual teacher said, no, it would be really helpful is if to build background knowledge in SEL, we had complementary texts in Spanish, so that's also something that we're working on this year.
So when we look at bilingual programming, there are several models we can use. Um, one model that you can use is dual language programming, um, and when you look at dual language programming, there's two ways that it can be, um, organized. There's one-way immersion, which is where the classroom makeup is all Spanish speakers, and they are receiving their instruction in Spanish and English. And then there's also two-way immersion, which is probably what we're all more familiar and heard about more often, and that's where the classroom composite is half, um, native English speakers and half Spanish bilingual students, and again, they are receiving their instruction in Spanish and English. The goal for both programs is bilingualism, and they both meet ISBE's guidance for bilingual programming. So, when you dive in and look at area school districts that are offering dual language, this is the list of school districts that we collected, and so, um, you can see that eight of thirty-five districts, that's our K8, or you meant districts that are K12, currently have, um, dual language programming. And when you dive in deeper, and, um, we had conversations with these school districts and learned more about their programming, um, I think the most important thing for you to know is that every one of these programs originated in Spanish bilingual programming model for students that needed that service delivery, and every program on this list is Spanish bilingual. And so you can see, um, most of the school districts have that program in one building. There's some, there's one school district that hasn't been multiple buildings. Um, there's been a range of years for implementation. Um, there's a different types of programs where a majority of them are two-way, and, but some are one-way. And then, um, we also have this line here about the proportion of how much, um, instruction is in Spanish versus English in kindergarten, because eventually, the idea is that you move to a fifty-fifty model. Um, so, a majority of the school districts do begin with an eighty-twenty model. Um, Glen Ellen is a bit different because they have a half-a-day kindergarten program, and so that's why that is that fifty-fifty model.
We actually did visit Elmhurst, too. So we, we went to Elmhurst to visit, so, well, I did, and then we conferred about that, but Elmhurst and Naperville, when we talked to them both, they indicated that they teach their language arts in English and Spanish, so even though it's a ninety-ten or eighty-twenty model, they do have that piece in place.
Thank you. Um, another programming model that school districts could use is foreign language, and so there are, again, two models for that, where the one is called FLEX, and that's really just, um, developing interest or exposure to foreign language. Over the years, District 200 schools have had, um, FLEX programmings in, in place, um, at times. The other model is called FLEX, or the Foreign Language Elementary School, and this is much more intense, where, um, the language would be taught three to five days a week for a minimum thirty minutes a session. The goal is to develop bilingual students, and, or students who are bilingual, and it works on, like, you work on the four domains, so reading, writing, speaking, and listening, and the FLEX model would be the model that would meet, um, ISBE's bilingual programming guidance. So to really kind of sum up a lot of this, we know our future considerations, um, that Dr. Minger talked about, in terms of we need to be looking at these new Spanish language arts standards. We also know that there is going to be a state assessment that will be in Spanish, and so, we already currently have a bilingual Spanish program. When I was doing my transitioning, and I talked to every elementary principal, every principal across the district, something that I heard over and over again from the elementary principals was that they were proud of the program that we have for our bilingual students. So, we know we have that program, but we would need to think about an enhanced TVE program that incorporates those Spanish language arts standards. Um, but two other models that could be in place would be dual language or foreign language elementary school. And so that leads us to the work that, um, we are going to start doing. We're setting up an exploratory committee to really look at the future of our bilingual programming and consider each of those three models. We put together a list of, um, research considerations. Now, this isn't a complete list, um, but it's a start of the items that have come to the surface on a regular basis in the discussions that we have had. So, yeah, uh, good time, yeah, probably.
Anybody have any questions on this particular topic before we get to, um, the next portion of this?
What are you looking at for timeframe with this as well, Dr. Murphy?
Great question. For now, we have set up three meetings. We've set up one for October, November, and December, and then from that point, we're going to evaluate further what information we have collected and what work we would need to do.
One thing I wanna just kind of point out, this is a board discussion right now, but I know there's probably lots of people in the audience who wanna have public comment. We do have a spot of our agenda reserved for public comment. Can we talk about anything on the agenda tonight? So, it doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be on the agenda. So if anybody's interested in this topic, just kind of hold your questions and comments until we get to the very end.
I'll, I'll also say that Dr. Schuler and I discussed this with the information that would come back to the Teaching and Learning Committee. Who are what kinds of people are on that committee? Absolutely. So, um, several different stakeholders will be involved. So we have principals from bilingual Spanish buildings, we have, um, community members, we have our bilingual parent advisory committee members, and we have bilingual teachers, in addition to, um, us, and also, um, our English learner coordinator.
So I have one more, I have one more question, because we have all of these different languages, and I know that, right now, Spanish is the only one that is qualifying for that twenty or more. Do we have any other languages that are close to that number, and if we do, are we setting a precedent then for those other languages possibly for bilingual classes?
I think when we look at first, like, I guess I'll answer your first question, is that we have a couple languages that have gotten into the, the teens, but then backed back down, and as we look at our numbers in kindergarten and first grade, I wouldn't anticipate that, um, happening if the trend stayed the same, because we, actually, our English learner bubble, so to speak, right now, is kind of sitting at third and fourth grade. So while we do have some languages that kind of fluctuate up and fluctuate back down, I wouldn't anticipate that anytime soon. Part of that is because when you look at native languages, um, even though there might be an overarching language that's in common, the actual native language of those students is often varies by dialect or, um, slight differences. So, I don't foresee that happening in the populations that we see a lot of students, um, entering right now. I would say, as we think about TVE programming, right, as we develop that TVE program, we would want to try to be consistent in what TVE programming looks like. So if we did need to then move to another language, which some districts have done, um, we would need to keep that consistent, and in the districts that have, that aren't in DuPage County but have dual language in more than one language, or have more than one TVE program, they generally try to keep that consistent programming.
I have a couple of, um, questions. We're, um, we have ninety-two that qualify for full-time bilingual services. What determines what is qualified?
So full and part-time bilingual means, um, that's kind of, is, um, decided by a cut score. So students every year take a language proficiency exam called the ACCESS, and I will say, that number was calculated at the beginning of September, so again, those numbers fluctuate, um, almost monthly for us, as I pull those reports, but the difference between full-time and bilingual is if a student, um, has English proficiency at a three-point-five or below, they're considered a full-time bilingual student, meaning that they need, um, more intensive services. If they are a part-time bilingual student, that means that they've met, um, they've achieved a three-point-six or above. On that, we get ACCESS test, which is our test of language proficiency, and it, so, even though it sounds like minutes, it's really about intensity and types of services. Exit rate for that test in general is four-point-eight composite, and that's kind of changed two over the course of time. So there used to be a literacy school, and now it is just a four-point-eight composite, and that's for all emergent bilinguals or English learners as we, we know them in this room at this time. So, whether they're Spanish bilingual or emergent bilingual of another language, it's a four-point-eight composite that then says they don't need English services anymore, um, and then they go on monitor status, which means for, um, four years within the district, we kind of keep checking on those students and seeing, how are you doing? And then, um, the state monitors them now till graduation, which was also a new ISBE change as of April 2019.
Thanks. And then my other question is, what is, um, the Heritage Spanish class looking at?
So Heritage Spanish, what, what, um, what they found, and actually John Hookington was very instrumental in this process, is that, um, students were coming into the middle school to take Spanish, and if they were already bilingual students, that Spanish course that we had available at the middle school wasn't necessarily meeting those needs because they needed something different, something either, uh, more, more around academic language, because they already had, like, what we would call so- social language. So, um, Hubble put that in place for students who are transitioning mostly from, like, a TVE program, or monitor students from that program, into Heritage Spanish.
Thanks.
I have a couple of questions. Um, so, from just a general perspective, well, first I wanna see, for, I know you talked about the schools in DuPage County. Um, I know we have a, on our website, we have a list of our comparative districts, which are K through twelve districts, and there are six of them, including us, and from what I looked at, only two of those of our, of the six offer a dual language program, is that, sorry, it's dual three and Barrington.
Barrington.
And, so I just wanted to mention that, from the schools that we look at and compare because of we're structurally.
Elmhurst. Yes, Elmhurst.
And Elmhurst is in their second year of programming, so that's fairly new for them, and, um, ISBE has a list that people can see online, but sometimes that list isn't totally up to date, because just like us, there's people that are always, like, in that exploratory, but as of right now, those are the only programs that are, like, up and going and, and serving students.
Okay. Um, and then, I have, because I have been hearing this for a couple years, I usually see things, you know, just personally, personal friends who this is a, you know, a big issue with them, and, um, you know, and it seems like a common, and I'm, I'm very pro-language. My cousin is, is fluent in Japanese, and started that in high school, and, uh, my niece has gone through dual language in Oswego, and, uh, but I, you know, we have different circumstances here, some, in, in our district, and I'm just wondering, from a general perspective, how do you feel like our foreign language offerings, just across our schools, middle school and high school, compare to our comparative districts? Are we on par with them? Do we, do you know, are we behind a little bit? You know, how, how would you place us, just in general, in foreign language?
Really, more of our research was just area school districts around in general, and so I would say we're comparative at middle school and high school, most certainly, and also elementary school. We haven't found a lot of school districts that offer, um, the program I talked about, the FLEX program, at the elementary school. Um, we really only found one school district that offered that. We found two other area school districts that offer, um, foreign language as exploratory at some grade levels, but we're still collecting that information. We have, we've heard back from sixteen different school districts in the area at this point in time.
And then I know when we're in teaching language, you had talked about how, um, in looking at the dual language program, that we have more of a transient, and I know that, you know, you were talking about that, about that these populations move a little bit as far as, you know, as far as the, um, the English learners, and that the consistency over a six-year period, K through five, could be potentially difficult because those families tend to move around a lot in our district, and I was wondering if you could speak to that?
Yes. So that's one of the data points that we're gonna bring to the exploratory committee, is, um, our data around mobility at those buildings. Um, but what we do know in the conversations that we had with the, um, school districts that are offering dual language, a few of them brought that up to us, uh, as something that, um, they learned through their first few years of offering dual language, that mobility played a factor of complexity for them, because they may have started with a full class of twenty-five in kindergarten, but as those students moved up, both English and Spanish-speaking students had moved away. So that's a- So that's a piece that we need to look into as part of the exploratory committee.
I think just why that's important to think about is that when you do the dual language model, students have to start at that kindergarten and first grade level. And so most people in the room maybe know that, but just that's why it's important to know is that students can't then add in as they progress through that grade level.
Except for English speakers.
Like the English speakers, right. Spanish speakers could, but English speakers could not. And even if they're Spanish speakers, they still have to have that level of Spanish proficiency to be able to get into that program and do well. So that's why you see that where it's not like, oh, well, we have two more open spots. And so it doesn't work like that. And so that's why that kind of like attrition occurs.
And then also I think, you know, I think about, I want to say, you know, thank you to everybody who's showing up here. I think it's great to have community members involved in bringing ideas to the board. And I think that's such an important piece. And I, you know, but I know that, you know, other issues have come before the board, you know, in the past. And I think about something like B-Team Sports at the middle school. That was cut, you know, several years ago and hasn't come back for, I believe, about $150,000 in budget. And I'm wondering, as we look at, and I know parents have talked about that. I just heard a teacher at curriculum that bring it up, that she really wished B-Team Sports would come back. And I think, and I would, Chris and I chat about this, and she brought this up too, that there's a lot of academic programs and things in our schools that we would like to have. And, you know, and I guess as part of this exploratory committee, I assume part of that is looking at sort, I mean, I hate to say it as simple as like bang for the buck, but it's kind of like, how much does it cost? How many students will it impact? And there could be other programs in the district that we need to, we need to put in a prioritization list and figure out where this particular program falls. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think that's fair. I think to some degree, cost probably, well, not probably, is going to be impacted by the model you're exploring. So again, if you are exploring a model that's reallocating resources that are currently serving our bilingual student population, and you can move that into a different program model like dual language, like even like the FLEX program, then it may not come with as significant of a cost. Obviously, if you are layering an additional program on top of what's already being offered. So again, as you look at like the FLEX, F-L-E-S, I think, model where you're simply teaching Spanish to all classes across the school, that probably is an additional layer of cost, right, that's sitting on top. So it's tough to identify exactly what the cost factor is going to be. We will certainly as a part based on the model that you're exploring. But I think more often than not, the dual language programs have their root at how are you serving your existing bilingual population? And if you can do that simply through reallocating resources, then most of your costs are probably in training and perhaps materials and some of those pieces that, you know, one are probably one-time costs versus, you know, recurring pieces. But obviously, that's got to be a part of the conversation for the board, right? We've had conversations as well. The board's heard from community members asking about, you know, shifting start times at schools. Universal kindergarten, right, for all students. Those are all programs that obviously carry a layer of cost. And, you know, as the board well knows, as you establish your budget every year, there isn't significant leeway in the budget. We're working pretty hard to stretch dollars as we currently work. But that's got to be a part of the conversation. And last, one thing I just wanted to mention with this as well, that dual language, this is definitely not the first time we've had this conversation in District 200. When Carrie Keith was here, you know, when I came to the district, you know, almost six years ago, that was one of the first conversations that I had with her was how about the piece? And again, right, it has always been a conversation about, one, do we have the bilingual population that would support it? Support it consistently? And so this is not the first time that we've had the conversation. At least up to this point, just the demographic and service model haven't been a perfect alignment for us. But I think there's some new factors that allow us to re-explore it this year and see if that answer looks different.
And then last, hang on, on that idea of cost that I know it was brought up, you know, about this, you know, potentially if there's a cost issue that this program working as a tuition-paying program, and it was a, there was a comparison made all-day kindergarten. And I just wanted to clarify that with how all-day kindergarten works and the idea of possibly a tuition-paying bilingual. That it's my understanding that all programs need to be accessible to kids. And that's how all-day kindergarten is, and that if there isn't, if a person can't pay, the cost of the district has to cover that cost in some way. And so I was kind of wondering that, you know, you know, I just thought there might be some clarification on, I don't know that that comparison to all-day kindergarten was really a half-day levels comparison.
Would not be, I guess, in this way. So our program, our kindergarten program model in the district is a half-day model. The reason that we're allowed to charge a tuition or have a tuition-based program extending to full day is that it is an optional, right, program for students. When you move into first, second, third, fourth, fifth grade, we have a school day, right? Whatever services that kids are accessing as a part of that school day, we could not charge a fee, a tuition fee to say, well, now you could access dual language as a part of that. If we offer dual language, that is the experience, right, for those students. So running dual language as a tuition-based program, I don't see as an option for the district. I think you certainly are going to run into some issues around what is the definition of a free and appropriate public education that's offered during the day. So I don't, would not be an option in this domain. It's an option in kindergarten because we have a half-day program. The tuition is for those choosing to extend it to a full day, which is optional.
So I have another question. So in these districts where they currently are running dual language, what does middle school Spanish instruction then look like? Are they pushing high school into middle school?
Yeah, and Dr. Meker and I can tag team this since we both talk to different districts. So in a lot of places, it's still developing. Because as you look at that, many of the school districts are in their first or second year or, you know, under five years of having dual language programming. So they're working their way with, you know, elementary programming first and moving into middle school. But of the school districts that do have dual language programming, in a lot of, in one case in particular of the school district that I spoke to, it's only Spanish foreign language class at the middle school.
So it'd be a beginning Spanish class, so they wouldn't be taking necessarily.
Heritage Spanish class, similar to what we have at Hubble, is the research I did?
And that's mostly, that is how Ellen Hurst was discussing as they look forward to what they're going to be doing. That's kind of what that will look like is heritage Spanish in the middle school from what they know now and their planning. And actually, prior to my position here, I was an instructional coach in a dual language building. So we were looking at that progression and what that's going to look like. So they have their first year of sixth graders this year. And what they're doing is they are offering, continuing to offer Spanish language arts for TBE students. In addition to, next year, they'll be adding that heritage Spanish. So you can then when students move from that fifth grade, you have to decide like where to allocate your resources, right? And this year, the only place that they could do that was through their TBE programming. Looking forward to how do we support the kids that were in that two-way duel that don't qualify for TBE? Because like Dr. Schuler had talked earlier about how that funding is often embedded in the TBE programming. So then you have to think about what's that going to look like in middle school? And they weren't able to fund heritage Spanish this year. So those students are going into the general Spanish, which is like a level one, and they know that's not working. So now they're looking at how do we do a, how do we do a heritage Spanish? We already have that piece in place at the one school, but that's kind of that, it can happen to where that becomes where that doesn't get to be budget neutral, so to speak.
I'll add on to this too. As part of our exploratory committee, John Pocington is a part of that committee. And he is actually a former bilingual Spanish teacher and a middle school principal. And so he will be a big asset to the conversation that we have.
So then just one more follow-up question. So I'm just trying to visualize, having been an elementary teacher myself. And I just happened to spend a morning in a dual language school. So I kind of observed a few things that I saw that were happening there. And, you know, as I see the pledges set in bold, the directions are set in bold. You know, when you're adding up that time during the day, something's going to be lost. And so are we looking at, as I'm trying to think of, if I was a parent and my child was going in here, yes, there are benefits of learning another language, but what are they not getting? And so is that exploratory committee going to be looking at that? Have you talked to these schools about like what's happening during the day? Because something is going to not be taught.
Absolutely. And this is where I'm entering to Dr. Meker, who's just at the bilingual conference and talked to people.
So I did spend some time with the directors, especially Ellen Hurst in Naperville. We spent some significant time together. I do know that in both of those schools, they're utilizing ESL specialists in, or EL specialists, however you want to look at that, to help supplement their dual language programming. So the specialists that they already had in place are continuing to support so that they can offer Spanish language, Spanish language arts along with English language arts. So students are actually learning to read in both languages. So that's the one area where they're doing in bulk. It doesn't necess, they're not necessarily repeating that instruction, like the same instruction twice. They have kind of taken that support option to offer the language arts in both languages. What we know is that if you don't offer language arts in both languages, then we tend to see models where TBE students don't tend to perform as well. The programs where they do receive language arts in both languages, we tend to see more of those bilingual benefits for all the students in the program. So that's what they're doing. And then as they look at their content areas, they're flexibly providing, they're looking at their language allocation flexibly across like social studies and science. And right now, they're teaching English and mathematics in English and bridging that in Spanish. So when I say bridging, that means that whatever they taught in English, then they're turning, then they're kind of using that other language, the other target language, to be able to develop that content across.
We actually already had conversations too about what we would need to talk about in terms of our current reading framework. Would that remain the same or would there be adjustments to that? We're working on a tier-one math elementary instructional MalaF guidance. We would need to factor that conversation into. I mean, there could be adjustments to science and social studies. So those are conversations that we would bring to the table.
To go back, I think, three slides, just a question on that. One more, that matrix. So six of those school districts just have one school.
Correct.
And so I'm pretty sure all of those school districts, they have a boundary, an attendance boundary for that one school. Does that mean that only students or children that live in that attendance boundary can attend that school? Or how does, how do the school districts implement? I mean, I'm familiar with how Ellen Hurst is doing it.
Correct. So it varies based on demographics. But for a majority of those schools, that is the building that might only have bilingual Spanish programming. And so it made good sense that they would explore a dual language program to be that model. In some cases, the one building has bilingual Spanish programming, and other students have been bussed to that school to receive that Spanish bilingual programming. And in most cases, it works that the program is offered first to the students in those school boundaries and with Spanish and English-speaking students. And there's, could be opportunities for students at other schools.
So if you needed more English-speaking students and there was capacity and a parent wanted to get their child in that program, but they live in another attendance boundary, and they got accepted, I know Ellen Hurst went through that process where they had to get that. So I would, as a parent, would be making a decision for six years, I'm going to take my child out of my home school and go to this other school so that they can benefit from the experience of dual language program. And that's a commitment of the parents for six years.
Most school districts ask them to make that commitment, correct?
And it's not necessarily the school that I can walk to. It might be across the district somewhere else.
Correct. And I would say Naperville is the school district where you, they have a program, they have one building that's a magnet building, where there are more children coming from multiple buildings. Whereas my familiarity with the other programs are mostly based from the students in their school boundary.
It would be more difficult for us, we have those five schools. I'm sure this would be part of the committee, be more challenging for us to create that dual language program outside of those five schools. But because we would have to, busing was a solution, we had to bus.
There's so many complexities with our current situation because we aren't unique in that our buildings, none of our buildings are solely Spanish bilingual buildings. Every one of our buildings that has Spanish bilingual also serves students that speak other languages other than English. So every one of our buildings could be operating a Spanish bilingual program, but they are also operating an EL program, which is different than a lot of the buildings we spoke with.
Sounds like the committee has sort of work ahead of them this year. Any other questions on this topic? All right. You're not done yet, are you?
No, I have an all-three time. All right. So moving ahead, I have another person from my department who's going to be joining me in a few moments, though. Yes, I'll tell you after a little bit. Ian Smith is going to be joining me. He is the new director for high school instruction. And so I'm going to start the presentation. And together, we're going to be talking about four work areas, areas on our work plan, rather. I'm going to be speaking about the writing and message production curriculum work and also inquiry lesson design. And then Ian is going to be speaking about transitional math and career pathways. It's important to note that most of this work is at the beginning stages and in that research and development stage for curriculum work. And so I'm firstly going to start with our writing and message production. And you're getting a bit of a preview here of our second presentation being around Portrait of a Graduate. This is one of the images from that presentation. And I included it purposely here tonight because the work that we're doing in writing message production, we very much feel is dovetailing with our work in Portrait of a Graduate. And we're having many conversations around what is going to make our students successful in their future with regards to communication. And so when you actually look at our Vision 2022 goal, there are four major components to that goal. They are writing and speaking, technology for message production, and digital citizenship. And here's another image from our Portrait of a Graduate presentation that I thought worked perfectly here. Because when we're going to be doing this work, we're going to have conversations around academic skills that our students always need to have. They always need to learn writing and speaking skills. But then we need to look forward and we need to think and make room for those future-ready skills of technology for message production, but also digital citizenship. And so one research study that we spent some time talking about as a group is the Bloomberg research, where these are 600 recruiters came to speak to 600 different companies and what they were looking for for MBA graduates as they entered the job field. And so they put all of those skills together and ranked them in the, kind of in the order of importance in the skills that students are graduating with. And so they put together this interesting matrix. And you can see on the top-left quadrant are the skills that are less wanted but more rare. In the bottom-left quadrant, less wanted, more common. Bottom-right, more wanted, less rare. And then the top-right, more wanted, harder to find. And you're going to see communication skills right there. And so it really just supports the work that we're looking to do in preparing our students. When we are doing this work, we, there are so many components to it. But where we're starting the conversations is all the way here on the far right with this idea of what are those future trends and skills that our students need? And then leaving in all of these other components that we these other components that need to come together in that curriculum. And so we have set our end-of-year goal to be, we're doing that research around the current trends, but we're really developing a vision for what that curriculum design will be. And you see a picture of our famous Tmallor genius here, because every time we actually talk about this work, they're really an inspiration to us in it, that they just really portrayed exactly all of those skills that we would want our, we want our students to have as they graduate and looking into the future. And so the work is going to start with our high school teams, and we've already started to pick some folks to be a part of that with us as we start to develop out this curriculum. The second piece that I would like to talk to you about tonight is the work we're doing in continuing our work with elementary social studies. And this is in particular, we're working on inquiry lesson design. And so the new standards for social studies have inquiry standards. And so times have changed where it's not just content-based, but we are giving students new sets of skills. And so this image really represents what that instruction looks like. The two pictures in the middle are what have been familiar and are students, the experiences that we would be familiar with from social studies class, where we're studying disciplinary content and then we're using sources. But the two images on the outside are what the shifts are. And so let me kind of walk you through what this might look like in a fourth-grade classroom. And so compelling questions would be how it would start. And let's take the content, fourth grade, one of the standards is, how has the past shaped the future? And a popular topic, as Mr. Kravsky knows, is the Great Chicago Fire. And it wouldn't just be learning about the content or the events. It would look a little different, and you would be giving students a compelling question to really dive in and learn more about the topic. It could be, was the Great Chicago Fire a tragedy, or was it a triumph? Then they would get multiple sources to read and evaluate, and it would end where they would make a decision, they would communicate what their decision is. And then the beauty of this work is around the informed action. In this case, students could make a public service announcement talking about how to stay safe, how to prevent fires. So that's really kind of illustrates those shifts around inquiry lesson design. This year, we're working with a team of teachers to develop a collection of exemplar lessons. We're working closely with them and walking them through that design process. And we're also working on providing professional development for our elementary teachers. One thing I do want to highlight, I actually had the opportunity to work with the Johnson Lowell staff just last week on this, and one of the questions I asked them was, what components of our fit learning environment do you see as a part of this instructional design? And if both buildings, hands down, they all said, every single one. So, yeah, so it was very exciting because our goal this year is to blend all of those components. So I'll turn this over to Ian.
Thank you very much, Melissa. Hello, everybody. Good night, good evening. So I'm really excited to talk about a couple other initiatives. These both come out of the Post-Secondary Workforce Rating Act of 2016. And the first is called Transitional Math. And what Transitional Math is designed to do is to deal with the somewhat large number of students in the state of Illinois who end up needing remedial math when they matriculate to community college. In most ways, this is addressed to the community college students, although these courses are affordable to all universities and colleges in the state of Illinois. But many of them end up needing a remedial math class, which means that they're not able to go straight to a credit-bearing math class. So in Illinois, the number is 15% of all students that go to community, all students in Illinois, 46% of students that go to community college in Illinois need remedial math, which comes out to 50% of all students in the state of Illinois, all of our graduates, essentially, that need remedial math. Our number's a little bit better, District 200, so we have 26% of our students go to COD. 39% of those students need remedial math. But we're only talking about 39% of the 26%. So that translates, and these are 2016 numbers, but that translates to, on 2016, 8%. So 8% of our students who go to COD end up needing remedial math. So they have to take one, two, maybe three math classes before they can actually get into a credit-bearing math class. One good thing to note on that, though, is we're looking at the data tracking it, is from 2014 to 2017, that number has almost come close to halving. So these are 2016 numbers, but 2017, that number went from 8% to 7%, and it was a 12% in 2014. So we are making a lot of progress already, just in the excellent things that are happening in the math classrooms. But we still recognize that we have a small, but still a portion of our students that do need remedial math when they go to, you know, COD. So what does this mean for the state of Illinois? It means that about 90,000, almost 20,000 students need to take one or more math courses when they get to community college. For District 200, that number's about 80 students. Again, that when they go to COD, they need to take remedial math. So you just can imagine all the wasted time, the wasted money, the wasted progress, the frustration that that involves for those students towards getting a college degree. Some of them may decide it's not worth it. And so it's really an issue that I think this, this course is, this course is really going to go far to provide a solution for. So just some of the facts around it. This, this is a fourth-year math course, so it would only be offered to seniors. So they have to already have three math credits before they can take this course. And it's not for dual credit, it's not for college credit, it's just for weekend credit. And they have to get at least a C or better in that course. But if they, if they do that, they get at least a C, then they're guaranteed that they will transition straight into a credit-bearing math class when they go to college and do page. So we're really excited about, about this course. This is going to be implemented next school year. So our math teachers are working on it, our department chairs are working on it right now. And we're really excited about what this is going to do for our students. The next thing is career pathways. So this is also part of the Post-Secondary Workforce Rating Act. And what that act asks schools to do is to create a learning plan for students that will help them make decisions about careers and post-secondary education, choices of training, and give them a course of study from freshman through senior year. And so the students will take a career interest survey as freshmen, which will identify for them an occupation that falls within one of 16 career clusters. And this is from the Bureau of Labor Statistics that have created these career clusters. And all careers and occupations do fall within one of those 16. And once that's identified for students, they'll meet with their counselor in early freshman year, and as they're selecting their courses, they're thinking about this career cluster in mind that they've, that's been identified for them. And then they'll use that pathway to make informed choices about the courses that they take each of their four years. So as freshmen, they'll begin to think about what they want to take sophomore year, what they want to take junior year, what courses they want to take senior year that are in line with this career cluster. So all their courses that they're taking, their elective courses that they're taking, are really now taken with a purpose rather than just hit or miss, or, you know, kind of random, or they're in a class because their friend's taking that class. Now they've really got a purpose and a structure and organized system with the course selection process and decisions that they're making. And that also goes into extracurricular activities as well. And then information when they meet with their counselors throughout the four years, now that they kind of have a sense of what they want to do, that they make, you know, more informed, have more informed conversations with their counselors about colleges and things like that, that would be aligned with that career cluster. And so those are, again, are just two initiatives. We're really excited about them, though, and we're working on them. And for both these, really be rolled out, Transitional Math next year, and then Career Pathways with the next two years. Any questions about either one of those?
Thank you. So Transitional Math, is that going to be open to anyone? I'm just trying to think of, so typically, if you are an I-level math student, you would be taking pre-calc if you were choosing to take a fourth-year math class? So would we give that option to people who are after junior year to make that decision is if they want to go the pre-calc route, or could they go the transitional math route? Or is it just students that we've identified as might need this?
Yeah, we would, we would open it to any student that would, that would want to take the course.
That would want that. And then I'm curious to know the number of students that, and I'm not expecting an answer tonight, but those say 80 students, did they not take a fourth-year math class? And is that why we're most likely?
Correct. Yep. So those 80, so I can tell you 50 of those students out of the 80 did not take a fourth-year math class. And 30 of those students did take a fourth-year math class, stats for pre-calc, but they had low, they were identified as having low SAT scores. So their SAT scores fall within the 360 to 470 math range. And so just doing the data analysis, we identified that, you know, we know there's 80 kids, 50 of them didn't take a class at all, three of them did, but really, they should have taken this other class.
And so then, and I'm guessing that number is probably even larger when we start to factor in the four-year colleges, at least from people that I know that have said to me, my child had to take a math class. You have to take, you have to score a certain number, you have to take a math class, and does it pretty much at the university? And they're saying that they're not getting there, so I'm guessing that that number is even bigger?
Right. Yeah, we really just, we just get data from COD, so we don't, we don't really have as well of a picture from the other colleges, universities that students go to. But we believe, just based on the COD number, we know that there's 80 students that would benefit from this. We think as many as 200 students could benefit from this class. Because in addition to the, those students, we know, you know, full picture, we know that there's 120 seniors that don't take a senior math class at all. So those students would be candidates that we would talk to about this class. And then we know there's another 80 that do take, whether it's pre-calc or statistics, but they're in that 360 to 470 SAT band. And, you know, we believe that those students may, may be better served to take this class because those students, just based on the data that we've looked at, are more than likely probably going to be taking a remedial math class, whether they go to COD or if they go somewhere else.
And so I know you mentioned that that Transitional Math will go to any junior college. Will that count for a four-year college as well as?
Yes.
Just in Illinois, though?
Yes, just in Illinois. Absolutely.
Thank you.
So just on this current pathway, I guess to the third bullet point, is this going to create a significantly added load on our counselors as we have engaged a bit more deeply in this, in this conversation?
Yeah, I think that's a great question. I think, I think possibly freshman year, there's going to be some additional conversations. So I would say yes, to an extent, freshman year. But I think as the students are now in that sequence of having a better idea of what they want to take in the succeeding years, that there's going to be probably less of that counselor conversation that's taking place because rather than, you know, a student coming in and not having any idea of what they want to take and, you know, using a lot of counselor time about all the options, really the idea with this is, they're already going to have that laid out, you know, for the most part as freshmen. So they're already going to have a sense of what, you know, kind of taking their courses with a purpose, the courses that they are probably going to want to take, you know, for the next three years beyond their freshman year, which I, you know, we believe will make things probably easier for the counselors because, you know, they're not, they're not just kind of, you know, they're on the dart against Wall Street or Lance and, you know, trying to see a best, you know, something the student would want. But the students are actually, already kind of know what they want to take.
And so I, and then I guess the next question, which is unrelated to counselors, but let's say our students go through this, and that fifth bullet is really about the coursework they take, I guess primarily in school or at TCD. But I know there's other high schools, main towns of high school, for example, is really big in business partnerships and creating programs for kids and to go out into the workforce as part of their school day and really test out. Is that, I want to read that as a second track, that is maybe a little bit further down the road for us?
Yeah, absolutely.
Your assessment?
Yes, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, as, as we look to expand this, and this is, this is kind of phase one, but as we look to expand this, we do want to provide more of those opportunities for students to get out of the building, do internships, you know, have job shadowing experiences as well.
And that's really, I mean, the emphasis there is going to be for the school district or something, that they reach out to the local businesses to provide those opportunities for students to come to them.
Yep.
Imagine coming to them as opposed to going to the schools.
Yeah, it's probably bold. But I actually just, I think earlier this week, the director from the Carol Stream, or the CEO from the Carol Stream Chamber of Commerce, she has a manufacturer's roundtable that she works with, and actually, she came out, took a look at our business incubator program, and I think that already can spur some conversation about some advanced manufacturing facilities. And again, if you think about manufacturing, manufacturing facilities do not look now like they used to look five, 10 years ago. They are so rich in technology, so rich in really some, some high-level skill sets that I think they offer some amazing opportunities for, for students candidly into, you know, a career path that may still involve a four-year degree, may not involve a full four-year degree. But out of that conversation, I think, was, were some, some thoughts around how it is that we can partner and get some, some community, you know, folks connected to our students and our schools and some of our students out in some of those. So that was kind of the question I was going to ask you, and I assume as well with Career Pathways, that there's a component of this that involves looking at programming and looking at the opportunities that we have for kids so that if there's a pathway we want to build out, we need to make sure that that coursework is there as well, right?
Right. And so initially, what this will involve is, is the existing coursework that we already have, and seeing how each course, or the courses that we have that end to the different pathways. But that, in that process, we may recognize that there's some holes and there's some, you know, obvious places that we do need to shore up, you know, our course offerings.
And might that conversation also relate to COD and dual-language, also?
COD and dual credit?
Well, dual credit.
Yeah. I'm still on track. Yes.
Dual credit. So a big, complicated conversation, kind of starting off this, this process. And again, that was, this whole thing is really part of the Post-Secondary Workforce Rating Act?
Yes.
And that's a federal legislation?
Yes. The other piece, though, that we have a lot of conversation on as well, though, is that on a, on a much more practical level, it really is imperative that if kids are going to pursue any kind of post-secondary opportunity, again, whether that's two, four-year school or some type of direct apprenticeship, you know, training, they've got to have a sense of what that path is. Really, college is just too expensive now for kids to wait till they get to college and then start to do all that exploration and, you know, get a year into a degree program only to find out at that point, this isn't the good match for me. So I want to be, be clear that this doesn't mean that, you know, in eighth grade or ninth grade, a kid is picking their career path and that's never going to change. But it is going to get them on an exploration path that's going to allow them to say, hey, if I think I have a, of an interest in healthcare, I ought to start getting some of those experiences to find out if I really do have an interest in that. And if I don't, then I've got an opportunity to pivot and shift before I get to a college where I'm investing really significant dollars in either a degree I don't finish or a degree that's not useful in leading to something. So, so the practical reality of this is as well, just the landscape of college has changed. We can't just kind of guide all kids to, hey, get to the best college you can possibly find, right? It's got to be a good fit, good match opportunity for them.
We do more to, to get our students to at least be able to see what TCD offers. I think that's such a hidden gem that we have, and I'm surprised more haven't explored that opportunity. But I think it's just in their mind, they're thinking it's something that it's not. And so even just getting more opportunity for kids to go there, maybe during the school day, so that they can actually see what's, what's happening there. You mentioned healthcare, so that's what spurred my, because it's amazing what the facility offers. Do you have any field trips to take kids over there?
In fact, any. Just, just saw a notice the other day, there are field trips going right now. I think Mr. Claypool just pushed out the message itself about an upcoming TCD field trip for kids to go and see the programs and learn about it. So yes, I do.
And I think, I think too, with these career pathways, it makes sense that TCD would, you know, obviously they offer, probably many of these career clusters, they would offer opportunities for students. So we would, we would, that would be an avenue to make them aware of those opportunities. them aware of those opportunities at TCD as well.
And during the freshman year, they, they have multiple interests. As I, assuming as I go along, and this sort of helps them narrow it, you know, I know when we spoke, like I had two very, very different interests. And, but I'm assuming that, so it's not like you have to necessarily pick one, right? Your freshman year is sort of like, I'm interested in these two things, how can we kinda narrow it as I get towards my senior year? Would that be an appropriate thing to say, that someone can do?
Yeah, I guess I would say that what we saw is that the work is in progress, so I don't think there's like a definitive picture of exactly what this is gonna look like. But again, I, I think the, the goal is to give kids that exploration opportunity. And for some kids, that may mean there's a couple of potential interests they wanna explore. For others, they may get zeroed in on kind of what they wanna do right away. But, but I guess I'll answer it by saying, the goal of this is not to limit a student that's still considering multiple pathways. We're not trying to restrict student opportunities.
They're certainly being allowed to take any course that they wanna take, really, whether it's in the path or not in the pathway. But it's just to give them a, something to guide them. Just so they can make an intelligent decision about the career, the courses that they do sign up for. But another thing I'll say is, you know, a lot of them, a lot of these courses, and obviously there's gonna be more opportunities as they progress from, you know, sophomore year to junior to senior year. So there's that time as well, where they maybe that can crystallize with, in terms of what they actually wanna do by the time they get to senior year. Because that's really when, you know, it really opens up in terms of the electives that they can, they can take. But I'll say that, you know, a lot of these, I think, are gonna have some overlap as well, where you're gonna see, in some cases, the same courses are gonna show up in more than one career cluster. So for example, you know, psychology, maybe in multiple of these. So for that student who's still maybe on the fence trying to think about it, some of the guidance could be, well, this, this course is in, you know, the two career clusters that you're considering, so why don't you start here, you know, with the courses that overlap? And then as you are still thinking about this decision, you know, you've got a little bit more time to, you know, to kinda land somewhere.
Okay, anybody else? It's a good segue into our next topic, which is Portrait of a Graduate.
All right, we've got a team up here that's gonna talk a little bit about Portrait of a Graduate. So just a refresher, one, we talked a little bit about this now, I guess. Why are we even opening up the conversation around Portrait of a Graduate, right? And as you heard tonight, Mr. Paulson, you just led us right into it, right? Simply getting our kids to graduation is not enough, right? Simply getting them into the college is not enough. We really have to be really thoughtful about what's next for our graduates, right? And so just context and what you're gonna see tonight. We've spent the first part of this school year, Dr. Schuler, myself, Mrs. Murphy, Dr. Kyle, Ms. Lackenell, visiting our, our elementary middle and high schools, asking our staff this question, really taking them through the context and the presentation you're gonna see this evening. So we'll jump right into it. But remember, Portrait of a Graduate is really around thinking about the skills and qualities that we want for our graduates, and really a vision exercise that's humanistic, and puts our student at the center.
Before you move on, just a little bit of context for the, the three pictures you see up in front of you. Obviously, left side, board will recognize that, that's Wheaton North's graduation day. Right side was Wheaton Warrenville South's graduation day. And then in the middle, those are three students that came through our transition program, participated in a program called Project Search at Central Dupage Hospital. That is the day that those three students are getting their diploma from District 200. Those students actually, that's, they've all hit their twenty-second birthday, completed that program, are all meaningfully employed now either at Central Dupage Hospital or another community organization. So again, we wanna be, be clear around this, this conversation that, that again, what we really wanna look at are, what are the essential kind of skills, traits that are transcendent for all students as they come through a District 200 program?
So the first question that we ask then, especially with our staff members, but also with all of our stakeholders, is what's our purpose of our work at schools, right? We serve students ages three all the way through twenty-two, right? And every single one of those levels, every single step that we're taking with our students, has an impact on the development, the skills, the competencies that they're gonna have today, right? So when we think about the purpose of our school, we first have to consider that the graduates that are leaving us, they're gonna take care of us. They contribute to our society and to our world. So our first responsibility is to meet every student's need, right? And that starts at the youngest ages, ensuring that they have the math, free foundational academic skills in both math, reading, writing. But it's much more than that, right? Growing a love of learning in our kids, ensuring that they're prepared for the next steps, whether that be college career or college-andor career. And with that, how do our children or our graduates face challenges? How do they persevere, considering all those workforce, future workforce trends, and social emotional skills that we know are so much needed? But also ensuring that our kids have multiple options for the future. You think about the conversations we've heard before, the presentations we've heard before, they all relate, and I'm sure you can draw some correlations here, to the purpose of our schools. So what we're gonna take you through is some academic contexts, and also some workforce contexts. Caveat here, when we lead our community members through this, or our schools through this, we actually have, we give each, and within each of these slides, an opportunity for some verbal articulation. We're gonna spend time laying that out for you here, but we're not gonna have the verbal articulation around the reflection questions. And you'll see how that kinda lays out here. But I do wanna start with our end. And after we go through the context academically and workforce-based, the question we're gonna end with is, what are the qualities and skills our students should have when we graduate, right? We have these wonderful foundational systems in place to support our students. You see there on the left, our SEL framework, our learning environment, co-curriculums, academic skills, the cultures we build, intervention services, all those go to serve our graduates. But the question still pertains, what are the key competencies, the skills, the qualities that our students should have when they graduate? So that's where we'll finish.
So one of the things that I really love about being back in District 200 is the fact that our students have their entire educational career from EC-12 with all of us. And so our teachers, our staff, everyone can really celebrate that moment and take pride in being part of that educational experience all the way across the grade levels. And so you're gonna see here, this is the same little guy on his very first day at school at Jefferson. And then the day that he graduated, returning to visit at Whittier. And we also know that our families take pride when our students graduate, because they've received a fine education here in District 200. And so we know that the academic skills and knowledge, that's always going to be a part of the conversation. But as I talked about earlier tonight, that can't be the only conversation that we have. It can't dominate our conversations. We also need to look at those future trends and experiences that are going to prepare our students for the future they have ahead.
All right. So when we set off on Portrait of a Graduate, Dr. Sloggy and I went up to a northern suburban district that had gone through the process. And one of the things that they did is they went through how to get to a Portrait of a Graduate and what you're looking for. They talked about the five workforce trends that are here, that are coming. You've probably seen some of them from the top to the bottom. But going through that process, even myself, who I feel like I kinda know what the trends are, one of the ones that kinda blew my mind is free agent economy. But these trends are coming, and we wanna make sure, whatever we do with Portrait of a Graduate, we're kind of taking this into account. The biggest thing, and I don't have my old phone, so I'm just gonna use Wall Street, the original Wall Street movie, Gordon Gekko's phone, big, right? Now your phone's small. You, that's just an example of technology change. You see it changing, things are happening, change is the only constant. So we have our, right now, we've hit all teachers, and we're going out to community groups soon. We have three questions that we want them to talk about. And we're not gonna have you do that in this presentation, but the three questions we kinda pose are, are we, are our kids prepared to cope with change? Because it's gonna happen. Things that, you know, a kindergartner's gonna see when they graduate college, or, or get to careers, not, we don't know what that may be. What skills or qualities does it take to cope with change? We all know this, everybody, the audience, the board, we deal with this all the time. The kinda cool question, the last one that I always like, when I got hired twenty-four years ago, they were talking about lifelong learners. That has not changed. But that does kind of fill into what, what qualities that we want our students to do to be able to graduate.
The next workforce trend is this idea of information explosion. So long gone are the days when students come, and as a teacher, we dispense all the knowledge that they need to have, or they need to take a trip to the library, and a book has that information. Our students are getting streams of information at their fingertips on an ongoing basis. And so this really changes the landscape of instruction, and specifically in the area of literacy. And we need to think about those skills that our students need to decipher valuable information, for misleading information, but also the, not just to be able to do that, but they need those skills to be able to do that too. So that's been part of our conversation with staff too.
All right. How many of you know what this clip is? Raise your hand. Okay. I mean, a lot of people that don't know, I love Lucy. But that clip, if you haven't seen it for a while, they're working at a chocolate factory, they're supposed to take the regular chocolates out. The belt goes quicker, mayhem ensues. Reason why I put that picture up there is because a lot of those types of jobs are gone, are going. I use the example, and Dr. Schuler actually called me out. The other day, I owed somebody twenty dollars for something. And I was in downtown Wheaton, and I went to the Chase Bank, and I wanted to see an actual human being. So I went into the bank, because I haven't been at the bank in ten years. I walked in, there was like half the amount of people that are usually in a bank, and they pointed me to an ATM. So there's an example right now of repetitive versus non-repetitive tasks. Anything that's repetitive, and they can, AI is gonna replace that job. It's just how it's gonna be. The non-routine tasks are gonna be those tasks that our elementary, middle, and high school students are gonna see. So those are the two questions we had our teachers and the community members kind of engage in, is that we're really looking now for those non-routine tasks. And that's not a new change, but it's just changing faster.
Fourth workforce trend, stable part of our workforce is the service economy. Think about this in really any profession where you are working or serving somebody else. So ranging all the way from your, any of your education services, your medical services, architecture, legal, you can see the pieces down there, right? Large part, part of our workforce considered to be stable, but to think about the skills that are needed to serve others. So on this slide, we really ask one key question, what skills or qualities do you need to serve others, right? In any capacity in your work life where you have to work with somebody else and provide service, you need to be thinking about the competencies and the skills and how we develop those. The final workforce trend, Dr. Kyle alluded to this, a growing area of our economy, especially as our graduates leave us, is the free agent economy, right? And so this is really any piece where you are being contracted out, right? For a skill set, for the use of intellectual property, for any work that you're really able to give or serve in another capacity, right? So when we think about that free agent piece, many folks could be hired or, or currently working for an organization, but could still be free agents, right? We know that this is an area that's growing for many reasons. So we think about the skills that are needed, the time management, the ability to market yourself, the self-discipline, all of those different pieces. We know that this is a growing area for multiple reasons. So we want our staff, our community to reflect on the skills or qualities that our graduates are gonna need to be successful free agents. So just context here for the Board of Education. We take, we take our educators, our stakeholders, or any of the folks that are going through this presentation, really have them articulate and reflect upon this. And then we finish really with an infographic. Can you saw this earlier, as Dr. Meeker and Mrs. Murphy were presenting? This is an infographic of the native regions of our Yale students. And as you're well aware, District 200 is an extremely diverse student district, or school district. It's, it's one of our strengths, right? When we come to this piece, I always reference Scotty Page's research out of University of Michigan. He studied groups in both social, public, private sectors, right, to really research their outcomes and how they perform. And he's, what he's found unequivocally is that diverse groups outperform homogeneous groups because of the perspectives that they bring, because of the ability to pull themselves together, right? And so truthfully, our diversity is our strength, but also District 200 is a microcosm many times for the global world and society and economy that our students will be entering. So on this slide, we just ask our, our stakeholders to reflect, and think about the diversity within our schools, but also the world that our students will be entering. After that reflection, we're using a tool called Thought Exchange. And I talked a little bit about this in August. We're gonna give you a live look into this here shortly. But this is where we're housing the question, what are the qualities and skills that our graduates should have? It's accessible, it's confidential, you can access, access it on the link or through QR codes. We make it easy for folks to access. It starts with a simple question. There it is, that's the one that we led with. You enter into it. And the first thing we wanna always get is, we wanna get some demographic information. So it would ask you, where, what are you, right there? You go ahead and click okay. And then it gets you right into Thought Exchange. And we're just gonna stop right there. If you look, it will allow you to enter your thought. John, do you mind going back one slide if it will allow, yes? Just arrow back, yes. If you look up here at this point, in the right corner, you'll see the number seven hundred and forty-nine. That's the number of participants that have participated in this conversation to this point. We've had one thousand fifty-one thoughts posted, so one thousand fifty-one skills or qualities have been posted. And the set of analytics that sit behind this allow you to rate other thoughts, okay? So there's a, a rating feature. You'll see there's ten thousand five hundred and twenty-five, twenty-eight rates. You can rate the thoughts that come across after you put in your thought, or you can simply go right into rating it one to five. Behind Thought Exchange sits a set of analytics that will derive themes, and that, that will extract themes around what are some of the common pieces that are being extracted from here, right? So again, this tool's being used for us to, to really cast a wide net, to gather feedback, but also to allow that conversation to continue, not only in the time when we're working with our stakeholders, but into the future. We're keeping this Thought Exchange open through February. So we're hoping to continue to gather that feedback and input as we create context through our presentations as well. We'll go back to the presentation. And so I'm gonna, I'm gonna end where, where I started, and then we'll go and take questions. Again, we end with the, with the question, what are the qualities and skills our students should have when they graduate? And just kinda closing, thinking about the Portrait of a Graduate, right? Why embark on this work? What do we do when we have a finished product? It's gonna be much more, our plan is to have it be much more than just a piece of paper that's on the wall, or something that looks great on our website, right? But truthfully, it's looking at what is our school community told us is valued most, right? What do we truly want for our students? And then really analyzing, do we have the resources? Do we have the opportunities to give to our students? I think in a lot of cases, we're gonna see some of the stuff align up with many of the things you heard tonight, like that a lot of the work we're doing is already in place. But I think there is also an opportunity to get better and look at where we can to make sure we're matching what the community expects from our graduates. So I'll go ahead and stop there, and we'll take any questions.
Who are some of the, the stakeholder groups that you're talking to?
Yeah, certainly. We, starting next week, I'm gonna start the stakeholder piece off, but Citizens Advisory Committee, we've got our Rotary Committee, our multiple Rotaries, Chamber of Commerce, our, our PTA Council Group, Lions. We're looking at current students and former student groups as well. And we can re-provide the chart that we had in, in August, that kind of lays out some of those pieces. And one of the things we also encourage our principals, right? They now have been through this multiple times. We've done it developing, and we did it with them. If they can use this in their structure with many of their parent groups as well, so we're encouraging them as well.
So is this, this survey, is that open to anybody?
Yep. Yeah, anybody, as long as you have the, either the QR code or the link, it, I mean, that's one kind of open running question that will stay open through February.
Is it kind of in a Friday poll?
We, no, we haven't pushed it out, like broadly across the, the community. We, we've gone through all of our, our buildings first, and now in this, next week, we're really starting kind of the broader community outreach around this as well.
Question about teachers. So when you were talking to teachers about this, who and how many are you talking to? The reason I ask is I met with a group of teachers last week, and none of them in the group that I was with had even heard the phrase Portrait
group that I was with had even heard the phrase "portrait of a graduate." I was kind of surprised by that.
We haven't finished all, like we still have some presentations of schools we have to hit too. We're not at full 20.
But there are staff meetings, so, John, I'm really surprised to hear that very candidly, yeah, in the, in the buildings. We have been to 17 of the 20 buildings, and we are meeting with the entire staff around it. Now, what I will say is, is this, that really even in the presentation, like we have not, I mean necessarily spent a boatload of time like talking around the tag phrase "portrait of a graduate." So, if you just said, you know, what do you know about the portrait of a graduate? But I would think if you asked them any of the questions that were in here, I would be surprised that none of them were familiar with it. It's the full staff that we're with.
So, a couple of questions. First off, I love how this kind of wraps up FIT. We've spent a lot of time talking about FIT, SEL, spent a lot of time talking about this. And I'm really excited about going through this process and sharing it with our community as we go through, but also when we think about we get to the end, you know, how we message that out to our community, to our parent groups? Because I think all of us as adults are kind of burdened by our own experiences and the lens that we went through school. And as you articulated, you know, it's very different, one of the kind of student we need to hopefully have at the end as opposed to what our, our experience was. So, I'm really excited about going through the process, but then thinking about, I guess that's a community engagement question too, is how do we, we don't need to have answers now, but we need to think about, how do we push that out to our community to begin, you know, deepening that understanding that the world of education and outcomes in the future is way different than what we had in the past? So, that's just something else. I believe these, you know, this process and key engagement is, this is going to be more than just this one year where Erica's stepping out while she's there. That's kind of the next step. So, I'm really excited about this. I love you using Thought Exchange, and I wish you could spend some more time on that. I'm moderately familiar with how that works. Hope to see that number get up over 749, which is a great start since we're only on October 2nd, October 2nd. So, I think it's great work, very exciting, love to keep hearing about it. Anything else? All right. Next on our agenda is public comments. The list is coming later. Since I know there's a list, I'll go through my, my little introduction. We do have five people listed for public comments, so public comments are valuable and important to board members. We welcome the opportunity to listen to the concerns and issues that are important to our community. However, is the Board's policy not to directly discuss or take action at any items until the time has been taken to gather adequate information and objectively evaluate available options? Please understand that lack of action or response tonight does not imply any lack of interest in what is being said. In addition, to preserve confidentiality to Board and its president, we reserve the right to request that items relating to either personnel or students be provided to the Board privately or in writing for consideration in a future closed session. The Board must protect this ability and decorum of the meeting. Please be respectful for the duties of the Board, our district leadership team, and the democratic process in your comments tonight. Please use the microphone and state your name and address your comments to the Board. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Mrs. Crabtree will be timing the comments tonight and raise her arm as the time limit approaches, just to give you a heads up that we're getting towards the end. Please be factual and courteous and do not include any statements that are personally or personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the Board or staff. If you feel your matter needs to be discussed in more detail, please attend the Board's next chance to chat, which is this month on October 22nd, or present your comments or writing by email to the Board just a quick, October 22nd, say which high school? Weemoreville South High School. So, it's an early morning if you want to give public comments here. With that, we have five comments. So, first is Rachel Batista. The microphone usually takes a moment.
Oh, it's on.
It's on?
Yeah.
This is my first public comment, so hopefully I buy it by all the rules. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. So, my comment is basically two parts. The first is to voice, as a resident of Wheaton, my support of the dual language program. On this slide, there's just some additional questions I have about the program. So, a little bit about myself, I've been a resident in Wheaton for about a year and a half, and I have a two and a half-year-old son who will be a future District 200 student. I'm raising him in a tri-lingual home, so I speak Spanish to him, my husband speaks Russian to him, and he also is exposed to English. As I mentioned, we moved up here for about a year and a half ago from California. And so, we've been exposing him to all three languages since birth. And in California, when we looked at daycare and childcare options, it was never an issue for us to either foster ongoing language development in Spanish or Russian. However, since moving here to Wheaton, it has been a challenge. We've had to go to neighboring towns such as Naperville, or Glen Allen, or even Aurora to really find options that are going to allow us to have us continue to expose him on a daily basis. So, when I heard about that Wheaton was actually, or the District 200 was looking at a dual language program, I was very excited, because now I have an option that I can continue to foster this language development right here in my own town, which is great. Also, just to share a personal experience that, you know, I was raised bilingual, and I can tell, I know one of the things that was mentioned in the portrait of a graduate is more the purpose of the schools. The purpose being like options for future, contribute to society and economy, and prepare for careers. And I can say, from my own personal experience, obviously, and a one, that having a dual language, being bilingual, obviously achieves a lot of that. So, I look forward to seeing what the outcome is of this exploration. So, the second part, just wanted to find out more information as an interested parent, like what, I know there's going to be meetings October, November, and December, but if we were interested to find out more progress, is the plan for this to be an ongoing topic in future meetings? Is there a date of a go, no-go decision? I just wanted to find out more about like how I can continue to stay abreast of like the progress on that, and if this will be something that District 200 will get on date.
Yeah, well, we can absolutely follow up again. Now, we got, I think your name will make sure we get you.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Mary Boa.
Hey, microphones. My name is Mary Boa. I have two students up in our middle school and two students, two children at Pleasant Hill Elementary School. And with all due respect to the Board, I would like to say that the lies of whiteness and the white supremacist policies and practices upon which this nation was founded have stripped us of a vast array of linguistic heritages and continue to send ripples of racist ideology throughout our schools and society. Two weeks ago, the Wheaton College undergraduate Latinx Student Group called UNIDAD hosted their first ever chapel service. The service was brought, the service brought great joy to so many, instilling hope in our community of a future where diverse cultural expressions are shared and valued. This joy swiftly turned to sorrow after a racist meme was shared on Instagram. The post contained, quote, "a picture of eight UNIDAD students and a faculty advisor onstage with the words 'our suffering servants' typed in bold across the bottom." The caption read, "Obviously, the most oppressed people at this school would get thunderous applause from half the school for saying their name," and included the hashtags "we don't just mow lawns" and "don't speak Spanish." Both hashtags reference comments made by the UNIDAD students who spoke during chapel about the experiences that they've had as members of the Latinx community in Wheaton. Ample research demonstrates the positive benefits of bilingualism for children and for our communities. Dr. Meker and her team have already addressed this. I am here to address the benefits of dual language programs as a strategy for deconstructing racial hierarchies and the contempt for the other. This interest is directly in line with the consideration of how we as a whole wish to define the portrait of a District 200 graduate. And on behalf of those in higher education and for everyone in this community who longs for a more just and peaceful world, and who believes that District 200 can be a place that ushers in a new generation of graduates into the world who uphold the humanity of one another, I ask that you consider the possibility of dual language education for accomplishing these goals. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Dixie, Dixie Flood.
Hi, my name is Dixie Flood. I addressed you at the August 14th meeting and had a comment about dual language. Hello again. I'd like to thank you for addressing foreign language this evening and providing us with this information. From what you've shown us, it's clear that you have students that'll benefit from dual language, which is great. However, what this doesn't really show is the families in the area who have a strong desire for their children to learn a second language. And by families in the area, I mean English-speaking families who want their children to learn Spanish. With just my small, personal, social media outreach, I was able to generate a large response from families in our community who want this opportunity for their children. Many people have expressed disappointment that dual language or foreign language in elementary school isn't offered here in Wheaton. People are also discouraged with the lack of resources in general in Wheaton to teach their children a foreign language. We have a void for learning in our community, and many believe you have a responsibility to help us fill it. I was told in a meeting with district administrators that finding quality teachers for dual language programs can be complex. I have to question the complexity if district after surrounding district has managed it in a timely manner. Surely, District 200 is not saying we can't, while all neighboring districts have already proven that they can. The importance of being bilingual is growing every day. Currently, it's a skill that brings you to the front of the line for job opportunities. Imagine the benefits of those skills in 15, 20 years. More and more people are wanting this, and we'll go where the opportunities are. Wheaton is known for its excellent schools, and people come here for their kids to be part of that excellence. To maintain our reputation, we must advance and we must stay ahead. Unfortunately, in this area, that hasn't happened. We've fallen behind everyone else. I've heard from several families who have left Wheaton simply because these opportunities are not available. We owe it to provide every school and every opportunity that we can for our students. I'm sure you all see the value in these programs, but I'm not sure you feel the urgency at which you need them. Right now, you are far behind the other districts, and your community is taking notice. Please don't drag your feet on this for years. At the very least, implement some foreign language program in the next year, possibly the FLESS. I'm asking you to please dig in and take the initiative to get something done. Thank you for listening and giving me the opportunity to talk. I look forward to hearing your next steps to move this process forward. Thank you.
Okay, next up is Jody Brenak.
Hi, my name is Jody Brenak, and I also did address you August 14th as well about dual language. I'm very excited that you guys are looking into this as an exploratory. However, I did actually go ahead and I did contact some of the other districts that do hold a dual language, or FLESS, or as Glen Allen calls it, a FLESS program. So, in La Grange, and I think some of this will answer some of the questions that you had about busing students in or stuff like that, but in La Grange, there is only one school, Congress Park School, and the, they told me that students in the Congress Park School boundary do go and are allowed to enter into the dual language, and the superintendent can grant permissive transfers for families within district but outside of the Congress Park School boundary. They do have to find their own transportation in La Grange. They do have two dual language classes per grade. Each has an English and a Spanish teacher, and we actually just switch at lunch. So, it would be English in the morning, Spanish in the afternoon. And that is through grade six, and they are looking to expand into grade seven, eight, and then eventually high school. In Lombard, they're in their second year, as they said. Something that is interesting is all these schools, they have a lottery every year already. And Lombard has had a lottery each year. They do have it in one school, but they open it up to all Lombard students regardless of the homeschool. So, anyone can go into this one school, although there's the lottery, so someone's up there. In Glen Allen, they have had a lottery the past three years. Churchill students are chosen first, which is the homeschool. Mrs. Ulrich informed me that as of August 25th, 14 students were already on the waitlist for this year. They actually have the half-day kindergarten, just like we do. So, they have English and Spanish on alternate days, so instead of 50% each day. They assess students in both languages. What's interesting and different about Glen Allen is they also have a FLESS program in progress in the elementary schools, which begins in first grade for all students not in dual language. They have 30 minutes of daily instruction completely in Spanish. And then in junior high, that increases to 40 minutes a day, which I think is really important, that all students are getting some form of foreign language. Finally, I did speak to Elmhurst as well. They are also in their second year. They told me they would have had to hold a lottery this year because they had such high interest. However, instead of holding a lottery, they chose to instead add more sections. So, right now, they don't. But the really interesting part about that is the, in Elmhurst, the Board voted to pass it in January 2018, and they implemented it in August of 2018. Like my friend, Miss Dixie Flood, said, the urgency is key here. I don't think that this is something that we can take our time on. We've already fallen behind all these other districts. We can't take our time and implement this in five, 10 years. Thank you very much.
Okay, and last, last, I'm going to get this wrong. Is it Albert Fonte?
You're right.
Yes.
Hi, everyone. My name is Albert Fonte. I'm originally from Peru. I moved here five years ago. I'm a Wheaton resident, as well as Woodbridge as well. So, I have my four-year-old daughter, and I'm speaking on behalf of her. So, pretty much, we moved there because there was like, we're looking for that program around, you know, and we couldn't find it. We wanted to move to Glen Allen, and then they moved to Woodbridge, where we might have the possibility for her to enter to a bilingual program, a dual program. Anyway, so I'm a tutor as well. I tutor kids going to bilingual programs or dual programs in Glen Allen, and I see that, that effectiveness of the program. You know, these kids are able to multitask, they're able to speak both languages at the same time. I was like, wow, without an accent, you know, which is, which is amazing. So, with that being said, you know, I think implementing this program in this, in the School District 200 is a great impact for students themselves to learn, to master skills that they are not like familiar with. Not only with, to learn a language, but to also expose to culture and to maybe get skills in the brains to learn a different language, which, you know, they might get into. Now, a couple more things. I like to say that I think people, a lot of people here are following the population, but not the skill that we are trying to implement here. I think we had to focus on the skill instead of following the population. No matter how many people live here, that are Spanish speakers or Russian speakers, I think we had to focus here on the input that we want to create in the classroom for students, you know? In this case, if we want to implement a language, no matter what language, but we have to focus how we want to do it, instead of looking for, hey, but we have not too many Spanish speakers, we have not too many Russian speakers, you know? I'm from Peru. In Peru, nobody speaks English, and I was, I was able to do it without any problem. And, you know, the population of English speakers are super small, you know? With that being said, like anybody can speak a language, you know, and you can implement it anytime, anywhere. One thing, the other thing is coast. I don't think there will be a coast there, because instead of creating expenses, I think we'll create a value to the district, you know? Considering like, how many families want to move here because there is a novel language being implemented in classrooms, you know? So, that's another thing that I like to also, you know, leave it there for you to think of. And, yeah, for bestest, you know, I think I'm for the dual program, FLESS program, or FLEX or FLESS, I think FLESS will be the best option to go. And of course, I like to see what's going to happen next, you know, considering what is going to be the next step for you to take. And hopefully, less than a stop in, you know, in, let's say, only conversations, and then we don't do anything. I think, once again, there is an urgency here, there is something that we are being behind other districts, that we have to face it and approach it, you know, in, in benefit of our kids, so, that's all.
Okay. Thank you all for your public comments tonight. There being no, oh, before I do that, one thing I wanted to point out for board members in your great package is this year's IAASB resolutions. I think I noted 12 new resolutions. So, in the next couple of meetings, we're going to be probably having to go through those and kind of understand what our position is as a board, and then be prepared to vote. We'll have to create a delegate to go to the annual conference in November to cast a vote on behalf of the school board. So, just a heads up, the first couple of pages of this, this document, we're going to need to discuss. we're gonna need to discuss at a board meeting and figure out what our position needs to be and so they can vote accordingly. So a little, little extra homework before the next couple of meetings. There being no further action, to come before the Board in open session, ask for a motion in the second to adjourn the meeting.
To move.
Moved by Mrs. Crabtree.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Booten. Sorry, the voice call, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, our meeting is adjourned.